I'd like to call the public hearing on the budget for the city for fiscal year 2023, 2024 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. We begin tonight with the public hearing on the fiscal year 2023 to 2024 budget. In accordance with Illinois law, the notice of this public hearing was printed in the Daily Herald newspaper. The purpose of this hearing is to offer the public the opportunity to provide input on the proposed city budget for the fiscal year beginning May 1st, 2023 and ending April 30th, 2024. In particular, we are interested in how our resources should be budgeted to meet the needs of our community. We will summarize the major provisions and follow with public comment. Mr. Wilson, would you please provide a summary of the budget?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So what you have here for forty this evening is the budget here to officially point four. The budget, as I stated, begins on May 1st, 2023. Among the four dates, as always, the draft budget is sent to the council on February 10th. The committee meeting discussing the budget was on February 23rd. Notice was placed in the Daily Herald of this week on March 17th. And here we are on April 6th, December 25th. Comes with some high-level information. You can see our tax rate, our total tax rate, and estimated EAB. There's a one-year receipt from the counties of ours. And then you see we have the one-year previous and two-years previous. You can see how the EAB has been increasing over the past three years, which is good. The values and power are appreciated. And the tax rate is saying largely the same, but a little bit nothing's changed. Our sales tax rate is at eight percent, as it has been since the past number of years. Before it was 8.25 percent when the DuPage Water Commission had a quarter percent added on there. But once that fell off, then the rate did fall down to eight percent. Overview, budget as presented and adopted, or as approved, I should say. Had a budgeted surplus in the general fund. There was a budgeted surplus in the water and sewer fund, net of depreciation, so cash flow positive. There was no reduction in current service levels, a net increase of full three-time employees. Then you can see a breakdown of the surf vehicle replacement schedule there. Vehicles in each of the divisions, what we're looking to replace. Vehicle availability obviously notwithstanding in each division for this next fiscal year. Major revenues, very similar to previous years. Kind of the one thing this year's sales tax did take back over property tax. Last year that was flipped around a little bit, going down to capital projects. In the past, it had largely been a non-homeoral sales tax dominated. This year, with the large grant that Mr. Lang and his team have worked on securing for the city. Grants are about forty-eight and a half percent of this year's budget between the $3 million grant for the roadways and then the grants we received for the stormwater project in Ward One, the Tall Oaks. That did jump that up quite significantly over previous years. And then water and sewer use fees right around ninety percent. That's consistent with previous years as well. Major expenditures, capital outlay, which was discussed in the CIP for this upcoming year, approximately fourteen million, a little over fourteen million. Approximately 5.3 million of that is related to our road program. As we said, we are receiving the $3 million grant for that, which is allowing us to complete a lot more in short order to get on top of our programs, stay on top of it. Also, a little over one and a quarter million to finish up the Public Works campus. Last year's CIP was over 26 million. Thirteen and a half million of that approximately was related to the Public Works campus. So if you back that out from last year's number, it takes you down to about 13.3 million. This year's 14.2, excuse me, so pretty consistent year-over-year, accounting for the Public Works facility. Police pension fund, the increase was consistent with previous increases. It was actually a little bit less due to market returns, but we are expecting that to go back up next year with the lackluster market returns we've seen over the last year. Expanded level items included in the budget as presented, there were four manager-recommended expanded-level items. Building administrator, police department software package, public works management analyst, and dial-a-ride driver moved to full-time. During the budget hearing, there was one additional expanded-level item presented that the manager did not recommend approval of, being the assistant assistant manager. So at the end of the budget meeting in February, there was a motion to include 75,000 for the assistant city manager position. There was a motion to not approve the full-time dial-a-ride driver, but put it at two drivers at a higher salary. And then just procedurally, if there's any changes to the budget from what was approved that night at the committee meeting, that would be handled during the council meeting. The public hearing is informational and like any formal action would need to be taken at the council meeting when this is on the agenda. Bottom line, the budget as presented began with a budget surplus in the general fund of just over $93,000, accounting for the inclusion of the assistant city manager position into the general fund budget. That brought it down to a little over $18,000. Either scenario, the general fund is above the 50% fund balance policy requirement that the city has set forth. And would also allow us to continue to apply for the GFOA budget award, which we've received for the past 14 years. So we'll be looking to go for 15 years in a row with that. And that is my presentation, Mr. Mayor. If there's any questions.
All right, thank you. Anyone interested in addressing the city council regarding the budget may do so at this time. Please approach the podium, state your name, address, and be sworn in for the record. All right, there being no public comment, the city council is scheduled to vote on the budget tonight. Upon adoption and execution of the ordinance, the city manager will publish the final version of the document and place it on file in the city clerk's office and on the city's website. I'll now entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the budget. Alderman Woods?
So Brad, if I'm clear, we're the city manager option, assistant city manager is then removed from the budget. Is that correct?
Mr. Wilson?
As we're sitting here currently, it is not. It was approved at the committee meeting. And what was presented and what's before you this evening is what was approved at the committee meeting. Any motion to remove that would have to be done at the council. But as we're sitting here right now, it is still in the budget.
Thank you.
Follow-up, Alderman Messina?
No, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Well, wait, wait, my motion is amended. So my motion is to approve the budget minus an assistant city manager role and a full-time driver.
Hold on, Mr. Conway.
Just a point of order. We're still on the public hearing portion.
Okay.
Any motions to amend the budget as presented, what can be handled during the city council?
City council, okay, got it.
All right, so now I entertain a motion to close the public hearing on the budget. Do I have that motion?
Do you want to make that motion?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Alderman Jacob, Alderman Sismarsky, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. The public hearing is hereby adjourned. Okay. Next, call the city council meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Ames?
Here.
Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Currielli?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Here.
Alderman Woods?
Here.
Mayor, please.
Here. I declare a quorum. Please stand and join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undegowed, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First off, I need a motion to approve the March 16th, 2023 minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Sorry.
Motion and second. Any questions, comments, corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, no opposed. That passes. I have no written communicate this eve. I do have one gentleman who would like to go to the podium. Yes, to the podium right over there, sir. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time and consideration. Doug Leiter, I'm at 132 Murray Drive in Wooddale. I've just been there for about a year and a half, but according to my neighbors, since that dog park was extended or the new building placed, they get nothing but flooding going on in their basements. And I'm starting to get that too, in my basement. And just if, you know, you might have programs, a 50-50 program that the village matches, something that might need to take place at my facility or at my parcel. I don't know if that's in existence with Wooddale.
We have a rear yard drainage. Mr. Lang could probably help you after you're done.
Okay, very good. Is there any follow-up to my question at all? Is that a, obviously, the flooding was terrible. The rain was terrible. So I, you know, don't want to put anybody out, but just wanted, it's still taking place even though the torrential rains didn't hit. It continues to happen, especially on the street, and then it goes to the backyard. Has that happened before at, on Murray Drive, or?
Honestly, yeah.
Yeah.
This is more public comment.
Sure, sure. Okay, okay. I just wonder if that can be addressed.
Mr. Lang could help you out.
Okay, very, very good. Thank you. Okay, thank you. Okay.
Is there any other resident who wish to address the council? Okay, under mayor's report, we have one item. Okay, I'd like to call up Ms. Justina Horsany. Come on this side. All right, this evening, the Wooddale City Vehicle Sticker Contest ended on February 24th, 2023. This year, we received a total of 16 drawings to review. This is our largest number of participants since 2018. Thank you to all the students who participated. The results of the 2023 Vehicle Sticker Art Contest, I'll start with number three, was Matt Hudak, 14 years old, eighth grade. And he is, will receive a $50 gift card to Target. Second place was Chloe Ababan, nine years old, third grade, also a $50 gift card to Target. And our winner, Justina Horsany, 11 years old, sixth grade, winning $100 gift card to Target and a vehicle sticker for her parents. Now, did you want to say a few words? Yeah, sure, good. Don't be shy.
Thank you all. I really appreciate this, you know. I really love the work and love I put into this, and thank you.
Thank you. Want to take a picture with the family? No, no, right. Oh, you want them in front? You want them in front?
Oh, okay.
Oh, family.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Nice job. Next, city manager report. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually have four this evening.
Okay.
Have you admired the city's veterans banners along Irving Park Road? These are displayed during the Memorial and Veterans Day holidays and honor local veterans. To have a banner displayed for this Memorial Day season, applications can be found on the city website and return to the city clerk's office with a high-res digital photo. The deadline to submit a photo and application is April 11th. Thank you to all the servicemen and women. Number two, the city has partnered with the Wooddale Public Library to host a community food drive and to support the Wooddale Food Pantry. Items can be dropped off at City Hall in the library during operating hours now through April 30th. This is one way to support your local community during their times of need. Number three, Wooddale's Memorial Day Parade is a community tradition and planning is underway. Please visit our website for more information and to become a participant. We'd love to see you there. And lastly, the first citywide brush collection of the year is set for the week of April 10th. Items must be placed by the curb by 6:30 a.m. on the 10th, and collection will occur sometime during that week. And that concludes my reports.
Thank you. Next, consent agenda. I have, if no objections, we have four items on the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the four items on the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, need a motion to approve the items on the agenda. Item number one, resolution approving agreement between the City of Wooddale and Performance Pipelining Incorporated for the fiscal year 2024 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project in amount not to exceed $757,321. Item number two, a resolution approving a proposal from RJN Group LLC for professional engineering services for fiscal year 2024 infiltration and inflow project in amount not to exceed $158,030. Item number three, a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Marten Construction, Inc. for the Clefsted lift station and Forest Main improvements in amount not to exceed $1,993,945. A resolution accepting the fiscal year 2022 annual auto report from Sickich LLP. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarsky?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes, and that passes. Next, committee chairman reports, planning, zoning, and building. Alderman Woods?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public health and safety, Alderman Sismarsky?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public works, Alderman Messina?
No report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and administration, Alderman Catalano?
I have three, Mayor.
Go ahead.
First one is a resolution overriding the execution of, in a governmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Wooddale School District 7 for the city's temporary use of Park District property for the city's 2023 Perry Fest. That is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Next is a resolution overriding the execution of the governmental agreement between the City of Wooddale and the Wooddale Park District for the city temporary use of the school district property for the city 2023 Perry Fest. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
And next is an ordinance adopting the annual budget for the fiscal year end in 2023, 2024. And I move to approve the City of Wooddale 2023 through 2024 annual budget without the assistant city manager position and include in a single full-time dial-a-ride employee. That is my motion.
Motion. I'll second that motion.
Any questions?
Of course there are.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, first, I think the easy one, I want to speak to the assistant city manager because I, unless I'm mistaken, I thought the object was to leave that money in there, which wasn't even enough to hire the guy, but so we could have the broader conversation, not to put it in and just take it out two weeks later. And to my knowledge, we haven't had that conversation. So I don't see the harm in leaving that in there. It doesn't mean that we're going to hire anybody, just like any other light item on there. Doesn't mean that we're going to execute the project or purchase a vehicle. It's just a placeholder until we actually act on it. So again, I would appeal to leave that in there to have the conversation.
Any other questions, comments? Okay. Alderman Woods, you had followed?
Yeah. Now I'll move on to the dial-a-ride. So my understanding in talking to the acting city manager, I went through the budget all the way back to 2011 and the, looking at the amount that we paid for drivers. Going back to 11, it was actually only about 18,000 over the years. And I was one of the proponents to push it to get two drivers so that we could offer more trips. With that, it did jump up and it would ran somewhere between 48,000 and 56,000 a year to have the two part-time drivers. So I'm not opposed to spending the money. I'm a, I kind of opposed to the way that it was presented and the way things are happening. So the, we're going to go from 56 to spending roughly $90,000 a year to achieve the same objective. Now, that might be a product of the marketplace. We might be forced to do that. But when I'm looking at, I got the, all the hourly rates from Brad and found, looked at what we're paying per hour, which is roughly $30 an hour. And if I backed into that number by the amount that we paid the driver this past year, would indicate they worked 1,748 hours. And that seems to be consistent because the rides have been consistent since 2012, the number plus or minus 100 rides. The amount that we spend has been consistent. So I'm looking at the jump up and the more, where are we going to get the other, I think that puts you 332 hours short of what would be the salary for a full-time worker. What are we doing with those extra hours if we're now paying somebody more money? Are they magically driving more people? Are they given other functions?
Mr. Lang?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, there's been discussion of expanding the hours, increasing the ridership through, you know, various social media channels. But meanwhile, any hours needed to meet the full-time schedule, we spend in administrative responsibilities such as filing, your standing, or anything of that nature.
Follow-up, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. So my concern is, again, so we're all clear, it's less about the money and more about the people and getting the service to the people. And my fear is when we do these quasi-multi-purpose jobs, that the tendency is going to be to start doing more of the inside stuff. You get caught on, get caught up in doing something and all of a sudden then the person calling for a ride is pushed by the side or moved to the next day. I don't ever want to see that happen. So that, starting out, the filling out the hours by giving people busy work or other work, although it may be productive, sometimes those positions conflict with each other and one could hurt the other. That's my concern.
Go ahead, Mr. Lang.
Understood. And this position's main responsibility is going to be dial-a-ride program. Since the elimination of the wastewater secretary position a couple of years ago, all of this scheduling responsibility is falling to the drivers themselves. So she's taking on some additional role in that regard as well as, you know, maintaining the vehicle after each trip. So the main role for this position will be dial-a-ride program that will stay as priority.
Oh, okay, I'll let you go then. I got a couple. Go ahead, Alderman Woods.
So the other thing that kind of flushed out as we were talking about this with Alan and with Brad, the driver we have now, and again, not concerned about the money because if we need somebody, we got to pay him. But using the logic that we have used that we can't find somebody at the lower rate, if this driver at some point leaves, whether it's year two, year three, year four, year five, I'm told that we have to hire the next person at the lower rate unless they come with years of experience. And I don't know where you get all those years of experience driving the minivan, but would we not be then open to the same issue of not being able to hire somebody at a lower rate?
Mr. Lang?
I believe the position would be more attractive as a full-time position now that offers benefits. And the feedback we've gotten from applicants, those we may offer to was that they were in search of a full-time position with benefits. So we feel that would make, eliminate that issue.
Okay, so that's just a quick follow-up. So in closing then, the big thing was the full-time and full benefits. At the lower rate is not as bad a deal as the lower rate and part-time, no benefits. That's the.
Mr. Lang?
Correct. I believe if the position that we were offering where you're trying to put part-time position with a full-time position with benefits, I don't think we would be here today. I think we would have that position filled.
Okay, thank you.
Might as well just stay there. I gotta. So if this person's going to work more hours, I've heard many complaints that we don't go long enough. So I think we shut down at, what, 3 o'clock? 3:30, so if we stay open that extra hour, is that going to fill? And, you know, this could be a test for at least six months and see if we get extra ridership just because of that hour. Is that something we could look at? Because that's been one of the complaints. So if we're going to spend this extra money, are we going to take that on and try it out?
Yeah, absolutely. That was brought by another member of the board during our discussions. And my recommendation was that we be looking to expand the program and monitor future committee items.
No, no, no. Hold on. Not expanding. So we're already expanding the dollar amount of benefits, all that stuff. And I think Mr. Woods already said how many hours, so we already know they're going to be working more hours. So the question becomes, are we going to extend the hours that we're driving? Because I don't know, you know, that's been complaints to me personally. I don't know what everybody else got, but maybe that might drive some ridership and maybe not. But we'll know after about six months or so, maybe, you know, to see.
Yeah, I believe our first step.
Not working?
We're going to have to restart the whole conversation. If we could just go back to the beginning, Brad can do his presentation. I believe our first step, as we discussed with the senior grass-cutting program, is going to be to increase advertising through our various channels. And then if the council wants to extend the hours of the program, then that's the direction that we will go.
Well, again, we're extending this employee's hours, so why wouldn't we give that a try? And you know what? You might only get one more ride. And you know what? You might only get one more ride every month. Well, okay. Maybe then that employee will be more useful to you to scanning and all these other things you were talking about. I think you should give it a try. Just, that's my opinion. Any other questions? Alderman Woods?
Well, just back up the opinion. That goes back to what I was saying. I don't mind paying for the.
Right.
I don't like it, but if that's where we're at, that's what the market says, so, you know, that's, that's what we have to do. But I want it to be for that service. So essentially, they have almost six and a half hours extra a week that they're not working now that could be used for rides. So why can't we just simply add an hour to the, to the time now? It's already calculated in there. If she gets a call, she, or if they get a call, they get a call. If not, then they can copy or type or whatever. But if the hours aren't adjusted for a while, I know what happens. People are going to fall into doing certain things or developing a system, and that won't include the riders. That's my.
And I'm okay with that as well. If we have a rider, they drive. If not, they scan.
And we can just simply put it on the website. We don't have to have a big thing. If people call at that time, she has, they have to be ready, whoever the driver is, up to, right now, we do it to four-thirty or so? Three-thirty?
Three-thirty. It actually, it may be four-thirty. I'll have to double-check the guidelines.
I didn't think it was.
It might be eight-thirty to four-thirty. But regardless, if, if that's the direction that the council wants to go, I have no objections to it. So if, if that's the consensus, I think we could just make that change.
Alderman Messina?
I mean, I think, can someone look up the time? Because that's important to me. Like, I think four-thirty is plenty. I'd rather go on the front end and add an hour on the front end.
In the morning?
Yeah, if it's three-thirty, yeah. I don't think, from what I've heard, I haven't really heard complaints. I just have heard the hours are not great and that their appointments are based on our schedule, because they're just dependent on the pace and that, that, I'm assuming that would give them more flexibility.
Right.
Whether that's in the, adding an hour up front in the morning or adding one on the end.
Sure. I believe the acting city manager is looking at the hours as we speak, so.
Okay. You have follow-up, otherwise Alderman Sismarski?
You just want to make it a full-time position, but how does Alderman Woods come up with, you said there's how many hours left a period of the month?
Well, so, just so we understand, we had two drivers, two part-time drivers. We lost one. They've been trying to fill the position. They can't fill the position because there aren't benefits. So this person has been working almost full-time.
What's almost full-time?
Well, they're short about seven hours a week or something, six and a half, whatever the math is. So here, we're looking at, because otherwise, this one person, I don't know. If they're going to work full-time, I think they're also looking for benefits. That's what my guess is. Alderman Sismarski, go ahead. Well, that's what, that's what it would be if we approved the position. Mr. Wilson, you had that time? Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The current ride times are eight forty to three P.M.
See, eight forty to three P.M. Are you guys listening? Eight forty to three P.M. So, and that was, some of the complaints I heard was they get done too soon. So if we're going to make this a full-time position, we should at least, and you know what? We don't have to do it temporary. Keep it, if they don't get a ride, then you've got somebody doing scanning and, and whatnot. At least people get used to it. It might take a year or two, and we might double ridership and we might not. At least we can look at it in a year. Do we have any other questions on this? We, so we have a motion to approve it. It's a full-time. Well, they're, the staff will come back to us and tell us.
Sure.
We know it's three o'clock. We know we're going to extend those hours. They'll, they'll figure out.
Yes, we can, we can discuss that internally and provide it to the council for some feedback and then, before we actually implement the change. So I, I think we might want to wait until the city manager returns to get his input as well.
Yeah.
No, we got the acting guy. He's good.
You just start changing everything, sure.
And, and the other thing is, so in thirty days, we'll be, we'll have the budget in front of us to approve. So Alderman Messina, you had follow-up before?
I just was curious, and what kind of information, if any, we collect on the ridership? I don't, eight forty even for me, it seems like pretty late. So I'm just wondering if like, do we, do we, you guys can do all that, but it, can you bring, when you come back to us, can you, if you have or collect any type of information on the individual, that might help?
Sure. I can tell you that we have eighteen active riders at the moment, and we do about sixteen-hundred-and-fifty rides per year the last couple of years. So we collect the number of trips and the number of active riders, really. If there's additional information you're looking for, we'll.
Like the ti-
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
Like what times are, like, do you guys track peak times or, is there, are they consistent? That would be important to know, like, does Judy, you know, do it every Tuesday at eight forty?
Sure. We can look to gather some of those routine ridership information.
All right. Alderwoman Ames, you had a question?
Yeah, I was just curious if you're considering expanding hours. I mean, obviously, it's hard to know what people would want, because we haven't offered an earlier or a later time. But, you know, I know that we travel to the hospitals. I mean, we've got the service area on here. So is it possible to look to see maybe what other communities offer? And I mean, it seems like an earlier time would be better to allow for travel time to an earlier appointment, because it seems like that's what most people are doing, is doctor's appointments, something like that?
I think, I think there's only us and another community that actually offered a service other, other than the county. Is that?
Other than the county, yeah. There's only a couple, DuPage County communities that offer their own service.
Follow-up?
Um, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Alderman Jacob?
And to everybody's points about the hours, with the hospitals, it would probably be better to do like earlier in the morning, because I know people usually have tests early in the morning if they're at the hospitals, and seniors are, take advantage of this.
There's something for you guys to discuss, bring it back to us when we have the final, or before, whatever. Alderman Sismarski?
Yeah, I would, I would like to propose, well, since the council is at the floor, it seems to be the busy time, we need to get to the hospital by seven-thirty, eight o'clock. Usually eight o'clock, you guys do work?
But isn't, isn't the regular cruise like seven-thirty to three-thirty?
Seven to three-thirty is most of our membership.
Seven to three-thirty.
So I think we have the, the general direction that the council wants to go, so we'll, we'll propose something for your approval, and then we can enact it.
And, and maybe we take a survey online or something?
I don't, I don't.
Yeah, I don't know.
Maybe a phone call.
I think we can call all of our riders. That might be a better.
Oh, but maybe there's people that might want to use it and who had better hours, they might. I don't know.
Currently don't use it.
Right. Okay, so we had a motion. We had a second. Any other questions? Otherwise, roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
What? Alderman Catalano, you made the motion?
Yeah.
Go ahead and read it again.
This is an ordinance adopted in the annual budget for the fiscal year ended in two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-four, and I move to approve the City of Wooddale budget without the assistant city manager position and including a single full-time dial-a-ride employee. That is my motion.
Yeah, and we had a second already. Alderman Messina was a second. Okay, so that was a motion. Any other questions? It's to a roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Okay, and that passes. Does that conclude your report?
That includes my report, mayor.
Thank you. Under other business, nothing this evening under airport or stormwater. Approve a list of bills, Alderman Catalano?
Yes, I want to entertain a motion to approve a list of bills for the April sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, for two million, eight hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and ninety-six cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Questions on any of the bills? Okay, no questions. It's to a roll call.
Alderwoman Ames?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Currielli?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sismarski? Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. We have no executive session, no orders to be referred. I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Take the motion.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Happy Easter, everyone.